Here.
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 Here. I will lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, please call a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we have one topic tonight. We're going to do the state of the schools updates. We'll have several speakers. Just from a, for the board's, for board purposes, we're going to have several speakers and we're going to have a a desire to ask a lot of questions of each speaker. So what I want to do, just so we make sure we get all the topics in, I'm going to try to time box each topic. We'll have a few questions, you know, that if you think you need a question, then we'll ask it. Otherwise, we'll try to do it at the end of the meeting. I just want to make sure we get all the speakers in, in a timely, in a timely fashion. So that's, you can't ask questions, ask questions, but I'd like to, to clarifications and stuff during the presentation and then maybe we'll bundle the rest at the end for follow-ups. Does that work for everybody? Cool. So we'll just work together on that and I'll try to guide us that way. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so just, I guess, little context for what I think we're trying to do tonight or even reason behind doing it and two things that I want to reference. So one, just a reminder to the board, certainly to the community, we're really at about the halfway point in our current strategic plan. So Vision 2026, put in place two years ago, at the end of this past school year, beginning of this one, we're really at the midpoint. And so we've generally used our committee, the whole meetings, to dive a little deeper into topics that are part of this strategic plan to either address, bring clarity around that work, build an update to that work. And so, one, we thought it'd be helpful to kind of give a little bit of a global update, right, around the plan. So what you're going to see tonight is actually kind of almost five mini presentations inside of a broader presentation titled State of the Schools. Second thing, so as we were approving the goal work plans for this year, I think Eric, you'd asked a question at one point just on wanting to make sure you understood the connection point between all of the metrics that we monitor and the strategies that are in place. So I do want to say just clearly at the onset, there is not a one-to-one correlation between a strategy and an outcome, but they are certainly connected in that we have intentionally built the strategies so that we believe strongly if we can address those areas we've identified, in the aggregate, you will see positive trend lines in the metrics. And so we just want to connect the two together so that hopefully we can continue to build clarity around that. And then really at the end tonight, in addition to, I think, the questions that, that Rob talked about, the goal of Committee of the Whole Meetings will continue to be to make sure that we are addressing not only relevant topics out of the strategic plan, but other topics that you have an interest in exploring in a deeper dive. So we have a couple of things kind of already identified, mapped out. We've typically in October focused on your report cards, student achievement updates, just because of the relevance of when that data is released. That will not likely change in January. Brian will still do five-year financial forecast because it helps to kick off budget development. So we have some anchors that are typically built in, but you have some flexibility through the year. Last year, I think, based on interest, community discussion, we did a deeper dive into safety in the April meeting. And so again, I would think that that topic will continue to remain likely relevant at about that period in time, but there's some flexibility as we really look at the five Committee of the Whole Meetings throughout the year, really four beyond this one. So if that makes sense, again, as Rob said, you will kind of see a chunk of the presentation delivered by somebody off of our team that kind of has umbrella responsibility, even though there certainly is some connectedness. We'll, we'll take kind of a, a brief pause to answer any immediate questions that you have before we move on to the next. So the last little piece that I want to mention is that from time to time, I think both board, community level, but even at our level, we'll get questions during the year that will come up saying, well, what about the state of student achievement and where we are? Our other goal in actually doing this presentation tonight is to also have a bank of video so that we can reference back to information not only in print, but actually in presentation. So we've done that a few times, again, even as questions have come up around safety and we've driven people back to that presentation in addition to, to written information. So our, our goal is to actually have a, a bank of video content that we can come back to as well, whether it be around student learning, SEL, the student experience, the staff experience, right, which is a combination of professional development, safety, kind of staff voice. I think our, our last two pieces will focus on just operational efficiency. Where are we in terms of how collectively we're managing resources and kind of priorities, especially in the facilities place? And then we'll end really with a, a piece around community partnerships and engagement. So those are kind of the five major buckets. Make sense? All right. Melissa, I think you are up first. I know these were not your slides, but you can go ahead and kind of incorporate them into yours if you wouldn't mind, just to kind of zip through them. So first couple of slides are really just demographics and kind of reviewing information off the last set of report cards, just to set a broader conversation.
Sure. So we're starting out here with the district characteristics, the population of our student body. These do, this information does sit directly on our district dashboard. So this is coming right from there. So you can see our student enrollment. We have currently 87 languages spoken amongst our students, 30% low income, 14% disabilities. Of course, our Vision 2026 strategic plan is anchored around our portrait of a graduate. And you're going to hear about how that's incorporated into our work tonight as well. Once again, our mission and vision that sits on our strategic plan as well, to anchor us in our conversations this evening. So, leading into student learning, overarching, I always think about the role that I have in leading our school district is really building an experience that starts in early childhood through eighth grade, that has that academic foundation for our students, that prepares our students for the high school experience. So eventually, students can continue on for a post-secondary education and complete that post-secondary education. So I'm going to start with academic excellence with literacy. And so when I think about English Language Arts, I really think about this from two big areas. So for K-8, it starts with early childhood through second grade is about foundational skills and we're building those foundational skills for early literacy. And then for three through eight, it's all about developing students' literacy skills for success in high school. Here, you're going to see the strategies that we have put in place with Vision 2026. So that has been the adoption of new instructional materials. It has been implementation of, we're working on Bookworms Intensive for multi-tiered systems of support and looking at our resource programming. It is about new curriculum and materials in middle school. So that is English Language Arts, social studies, and we're starting to look at our reading interventions. On your dashboard, you have a few metrics that sit with FastBridge. So we're looking at early reading. We're looking at AMATH and we're looking at the growth. And then we also report out our IAR scores on a yearly basis. With us being two years into the strategic plan, I actually have a suggestion for a metric to add, and I'll spend some more time on this at the October Committee of the Whole, but I am making a suggestion that we add the IAR growth percentiles to our dashboard. This is something that wasn't available when we developed the dashboard, but has become available and we continue to report it out year after year and it plays a key role in our Summit designations. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, we are two years into our strategic plan, but I always like to back up when I'm talking about academic success to pre-pandemic. And so you're going to see results on our IAR assessment. This is third through eighth grade literacy, the percentage of students who met or exceeded on the IAR. So you're going to see pre-pandemic results there with 2019. And then you can see the results emerging from the pandemic all the way up to 2023. 2024 isn't on here yet because that's something that we need to report out at the end of October when the data is finalized. But as you can see, we, that focus on learning acceleration is paying off for District 200 students. And we are now seeing results that are higher than pre-pandemic learning outcomes. So we're certainly proud of that. Now, in the area of mathematics, I like to think about that student experience in three different phases for K-8 students. First and foremost, for early childhood through second grade, the focus is on developing early numeracy skills. And then as we move into third through fifth grade, we are securing stronger academic skills around mathematics. So we're securing things like multiplication, division, fractions, and that's all preparing students for middle school. And then the middle school experience, those topics of mathematics change, and it's all about preparing students for Algebra I. Now, our strategic plan has had multiple strategies that we have in motion, but have also accomplished. So we now have a common set of instructional materials in math for kindergarten through eighth grade. We are now moving on to developing our Tier Two math interventions in the elementary level. We're also looking at resource programming. And we've also had a focus on developing our Portrait of a Graduate skills in math classrooms. Again, just with literacy, the metrics that sit on your dashboard are a mirror in mathematics. So there's the metrics for FastBridge and then there's also our IAR results that we post yearly. And again, the same recommendation to add the growth percentiles from IAR. Here, you're going to see again that graph that shows student results for the percentage of students meeting or exceeding on IAR pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. Now, when we were within the years of the pandemic, we immediately got on the idea that we needed to intervene with mathematics right away. So that was a big focus for us. And that's why you see that that difference between pre-pandemic results and the first time our students tested again, there wasn't as much of a dramatic decrease. We are seeing a slight increase year over year. When we, those results come out in October, we're certainly seeing results that are exceeding pre-pandemic results as well. So we're pleased to speak about that in October. So moving now from the K-8 experience into the high school experience. This is all about preparing our students for credit-bearing coursework and post-secondary educational experiences. And so starting with English proficiency, we know if a student is prepared for credit-bearing coursework because they have met one of those indicators that is listed under English proficiency. So that indicator can be through a course and they have to earn a passing grade of an A, B, or C, or it can be through an exam score where you see that score listed for the SAT, ACT, or an AP exam. We have similar descriptions for math proficiency. Again, we want all of our students to be able to enter into credit-bearing coursework. And so a little bit different on the math side where it does list out another course with Algebra II. Algebra II serves as a gateway to post-secondary math education. And then you can also see with the exam scores, it's listed as the score, but also a recommendation of a fourth year of math courses, if that's the indicator. A few more metrics that sit on your dashboard that we monitor so that we know students are going to be prepared for post-secondary education. Those include freshman on track, graduation rate, the percentage of students completing advanced coursework. And we also have the PSAT to SAT growth metric. That is going to be currently paused though, due to a change in state testing, moving to the ACT. Now, several strategies that we have put in place to prepare our students for college and career. In the English space, we have added courses. We have added opportunities for our students to be ready for a post-secondary education. This includes, for the first time this year, we're implementing transitional English. And as a reminder for the board, we are, for DuPage County, we are one of two school districts implementing that course currently. We added dual-credit English last year. And, and for math, we're really been very focused on identifying students that could benefit from a fourth year of math or for a transitional course. And we've also added academic interventionists that are supporting our students, like fresh, with freshman on track metrics or credit recovery for graduation. Now, moving from the academic side to the career side, we want all students to also be prepared to think about what they potentially want to study in that post-secondary education. We want to bring relevance to their high school experience and develop interest and talents. So the metric that sits on your dashboard for that is students completing advanced coursework. I do have a recommendation for another metric that I believe we should add to the dashboard, and that is the number of students that are earning a career pathway endorsement. This is monitored by the state. Last year, District 200 had 19 students that earned this metric, and we're going to have even more from the class of 24. Our work in the career space has been all about career pathways. And so we are working to develop out complete career pathways that include a sequence of courses, dual-credit opportunities, other early college coursework, work-based learning experiences. And so the complete career pathways that we currently have are in education business and nursing. We have others listed there that are in development, culinary, marketing, and broadcast media. And then we have also worked to increase the number of dual-credit courses we offer, and specifically in the area of career pathways. So you can see the courses that we have added there that are specifically related to career pathway experiences. We have even more that are going to be proposed this year.
Let's kind of pause in this, this first section. We can go back one, one slide to kind of your last piece, just to stay there. I guess, any immediate questions, thoughts, reactions for Melissa? Again, she kind of gave you a high-level view on where we've been and, and again, kind of forecast moving forward in the Ed Services Student Learning space.
Thank you for the, the great overview. Just one question. The, the note about PSAT to SAT growth and pausing that metric, I understand the state's changed their metric, and I think it's unfortunate because it makes it hard to, to do these year-over-year-over-year comparisons. Is there no option to normalize between SAT and ACT to still provide a view of that so we don't lose that continuity?
There are concurrents tables, and I think that this is something Dr. Ozmikowski and I need to study a little bit more closely to make a determination about how we would make that report on your dashboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Clarifying question. Is the dual-credit English course offered at both high schools?
Yes.
Okay.
And in fact, this year, I should say too, between both campuses, we have 64 more students that are enrolled in that course.
Thank you.
Moving forward now, just in that dual-credit space, because I know that's been a question, as you're developing new dual-credit opportunities, we're really doing that through the lens of if we offer it, we're going to offer it in both campuses, correct?
Especially when it's connected to a career pathway option and also a transferable gen ed course.
But we do have some that are only offered at Wheat Morville South?
There's a couple. There's things like RP, a couple of PE courses where the teacher who teaches self-defense or a teacher who does RTE, they have different certifications that allow for it to be dual-credit opportunity on each side of town.
On the graphs that show the percentage of students that meet or exceed grade level standards for ELA and math according to the IAR test, can you talk a little bit about how the IAR standards at grade level compare with national averages?
How, like Illinois's results compared to national? Illinois has some of the most rigorous expectations for meeting or exceeding proficiency in the entire nation. So it is, in fact, when you look at the report and the percentage of students that exceed on those assessments, it's often under 10% across the state, which always, also when you think about the percentage of students who are taking higher-level courses, you know, it does show that it's, those cut scores are very rigorous.
Melissa, what's, what is that? So I mean, we've talked a little bit about it internally, just the kind of point of relation between like national norming often on kind of other local assessment with that, that meet score on, on Illinois. As we've looked at FastBridge and kind of where, where do you need to sit on FastBridge to actually just meet the standard in Illinois?
I've seen correlations with nationally-normed tests, saying students have to score at like the 70th percentile and higher often to meet or exceed on our state test. That's often the number I see. So it's certainly, you know, high.
So I don't, I don't think, and I thank you for, for sharing that. I mean, I think often what I hear, and I've actually had, had a lot of good conversations with folks, there's nothing wrong with high standards and setting a standard that's challenging. I think the challenge is when that gets equated to something as simple as whether or not you can read, which is certainly not to, to meet that state assessment, especially a really complicated ELA assessment that has multiple layers of writing and pretty complex skill. It's just not an apples-to-apples comparison to say if you can't meet on that assessment, you can't read. Again, challenging standards, good. We're certainly seeing good growth, but, but I appreciate you asking that, that question. And I do last little piece. I think ACT, what I've seen very recently with that transition to ACT is that the state is looking at that cut score piece on ACT. So even at the, the SAT level, the cut score Illinois uses is beyond what College Board describes as a, a standard of college readiness. For whatever reason, Illinois initially set that higher, and I think they are recalibrating that with the transition to ACT.
And in fact, Illinois put out data on that recently. They said they have the fourth-highest proficiency in the nation for SAT.
So in looking at these metrics, you know, obviously continuous improvement trends are great, but I'm wondering, is there an opportunity to impose on their, what like the College Board cut level is or what the national averages are? Just so there's some objective point of orientation. I don't know what exactly that would look like, but it, it might be helpful because I think a lot of people, to exactly the point made, would look at this and say, oh, 60% or 70%, that doesn't sound real good, but you need context to understand what that means.
Probably easier to do at the high school level where it is a national assessment. IAR, I don't think you could build a national-level comparison just because of the fact that it's, it's a, it's a state assessment. I, I think every year, one of the things that we brought to the board, and certainly we can look at how perhaps we, we share some of those results in a more public way. There, there are some organizations that will, will do kind of norm studies within Illinois to show where your results sit relative to, to the state, right? That, that actually kind of puts that in a, in a, almost a percentile within the state. ECRAS does, does a study like that every year, and I think we could certainly look at that. But I, I don't think unless you have a thought around that, I don't know how you would nationally norm the, the K-8 state assessment result.
No, I think that, that'd be challenging. I think this is why I'm proposing also to include the IAR growth percentile onto your dashboard because we're able to then say, this is strong growth, this is, you know, adequate growth, et cetera. So I think that's just another layer.
So does FastBridge have a way to nationally norm?
It is a nationally-normed assessment, correct?
So do we include that information on the dashboard?
Yes. Well, we can, we include on your dashboard the percentage of students who are at or above the 50th percentile.
Thank you.
This is a question I was going to wait, but kind of piggybacking on what Eric brought. What are our goals on these, you know, like, so what am I looking at? Well, where we're about 60%, right? And so to a uninformed person, that's not a very good number, right? But there's a lot of nuance to it and it's not as bad as it looks, kind of. But, you know, what would our, what will we be striving for to meet five years down the road or whatever?
Yeah. Um, it's a good question. We, when we initially developed the dashboard, we had set goals around FastBridge and a target for FastBridge. We had not set goals as a team around the IAR. So I think we have the opportunity to have that conversation and would want to have that with my colleagues.
Yeah. And I think the other piece I would, would put into there, Dave, and I think, I think if that's something that the board is interested in, while we obviously have some expertise inside of the district, Julie, oh, is, is really good. I think we may need to lean on some external expertise to help with that because I don't think you can. So you can set goals certainly around that. What I don't want for the board to do, or even our team to do, is to just set an arbitrary number to set an arbitrary number. So if you're going to set a realistic goal in that space, it has to be based on some true analytics that have looked at past performance along with projected growth that, that actually can be done by a statistician. There are organizations that can do that, that can kind of look at where our performance has been and then set for you some bands on, you know, what would anticipated growth look like, what would higher-than-anticipated growth look like, and what would kind of substandard growth look like. But, but that's going to take a, a little bit of investment to do. And so it's not a bad thing. It's just probably a conversation that I think we'd have to have on how important that is as a priority because, you know, it, it would probably take a, a little bit of an expanded partnership with like an ECRAS or a group like that that can do that work.
I had some other questions, but probably wait till the end or should I just? Do we have these for comparable, our comparable districts, you know, where we measure against, you know, 204 and Barrington?
So each year, Illinois State Board of Education puts out the Illinois report card. So all of the IAR data is publicly available. And so we're able to make those comparisons. So that would be for the percentage of students meet succeeds and also the growth percentile.
And then specific to the IAR, has the measurement remained constant?
It has through, through 2019 that I have reported there for you.
Okay, so 2019 to now, it's been the same measure?
Yes. I believe it's been the same previously, but we had some years of park in there too. So the timeline to me, I'd have to go back and think through the details of it exactly. We had a few years of park and then we switched over to IAR. But for sure, since what sits on your graph there is, has remained the same.
Okay, thank you.
And one last question. The IAR growth potential metric, what would that look like? Like how, what percentage of students? Like how, what percentage of students achieved a year of growth?
The way, the way the state reports that out is on a percentile. So they look at every single student's score year over year. So they look at the student's score, for example, in fourth grade, in fifth grade, and then they put it on a percentile from zero to 99, saying the student who is at the 99th percentile obviously had the most growth. And then they overall calculate it for the school district on a percentile.
So do you know what percentile correlates to a year of growth or?
They also give us recommendations for this band means strong growth, this band means above average growth, this band average growth, and then, you know, growth that isn't as where we would want it to be. So I included that last year in my presentation in October and I can include that as well again.
Okay to move on? All right. So we're gonna move on to student experience, which is Dr. Sloggi.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Schuler, Board of Education. Excited to talk about the student experience tonight. I will start just really with our aspiration for any student within District 100. It's great that we live with student learning because truly the student experience encompasses student, student learning, right? So we want our kids to really maximize their academic, social learning abilities, really through a robust school experience that includes, right, relationships, extracurriculars, high expectations in the learning space, all in a supportive and safe environment. So I'm gonna talk about the student experience aside from the student learning piece, but the perspective is always that the full experience that we're providing and that I speak about is all about that portrait of a graduate. It's all about increasing academic excellence, giving kids problem solving skills, helping them be better collaborators, making them more resilient. All those pieces tie into it. I'm gonna start at our number one organizational value, which is student connectedness and strong relationships. Past year, 20, during the 2022, 23, or 23, 24 school year, 96% of our students were connected to school through a trusted adult. So if a student is to come here, just know that they are gonna be cared for personally and academically by an adult that has high expectations for them to learn. On each of our slides, I'll also at the bottom for most of them, you'll see some of the key strategies for this year. Some of them are repeat year after year. Some of them will be new ones that, that are currently on your dashboard. But everything we do, really the foundation of the student experience is all around being connected, not only to staff, but also those peer-to-peer relationships. A key piece of that is the extracurricular environment in our schools at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, right? Starting in elementary school, there are lots of opportunities for kids to get engaged in activities and clubs. And then on through middle and high school, the opportunities expand exponentially. We have the Board of Education to thank for their investment in that. There's been continued investment at all levels to give our kids those opportunities. And when we go out and speak with our kids, that's typically one of the first things they say about the school experience, that their ability to find an interest, to connect with peers, to connect with coaches, sponsors, teachers in that extracurricular environment, whether it's a club, activity, or sport, is one of the things that they treasure the most about it. And there's a real key connection there, not only to student learning, but also just the ability to exhibit some of those social emotional skills or some of those portrait of a graduate skills in a natural, authentic environment. One of your board metrics that you monitor year after year is our high school extracurricular participation. Last year, 76% of our high school students participated in at least one club activity or sport. That's a 10% increase from 2018, 19 year and a, and a 2% increase from, from the previous year. So we continue to see that increasing. We're starting a more detailed monitoring approach of that at the middle school level as well. And we always tell all of our staff that they're all accountable for getting kids engaged in things outside of school and that starts at our youngest levels. So we're excited about that and happy to share that for our community and our students and we think it's a really strong part of District 200. Obviously, part of the school experience also encompasses coming to school and being at school, really, really important. And we've had a strong focus on student attendance, especially last year and into this year. Through the pandemic and post pandemic across the state and across District 200, we saw dips in student attendance, specifically the percentage of students that were chronically absent. So what we aim to do is really increase the percentage of students that are not chronically absent. Chronically absent being students that miss 10% or more of the school year. And, and the reason why that number exists or why it's important, that 10% number is typically, once you get to that chronic absence state, that's where you see behavior, starting to increase significant behavior. That's where you see lack of participation or student engagement. And usually we've seen some, and through some of our internal stuff, decrease in academic achievement as well. I'm happy to report our schools worked really, really hard last year on targeting really those students that were at risk in that attendance space. And we increased our percentage of students that were not chronically absent by 3.4%. When you take that across the district of a little over 11,000, a little under 12,000 students, that's a good number. We want that to continue to increase because we want our kids to be at, at school so that they can get that full experience. Part of that experience, if you're a kid coming here, is being in a positive climate. I don't have a specific metric for you other than tell you our aspiration, what we train staff on, what we talk about continuously. It's even a part of our sharper focus presentations that we're doing at all of our schools right now is, is we want a five to one ratio with our students of positive interactions to negative interactions. That's something as simple as if you see some, a student in the hallway, you greet them by name, now you're at a one to O ratio with them, taking an interest in them, asking them how their game was the night before, whatever it may be. There's actually research behind that around not only forming a positive culture, but increasing positive behavior and shaping behavior. This is integrated into much of the training we do, the behavioral leadership teams that we have at our schools. So if I was speaking to a student that was coming to District 200, part of their experience, our aspiration is for it to be very positive and them to have a high level of positive interactions, not just with the teacher in their classroom, but with all members from our school setting. Which all of the first things I've just spoke to you contribute to an optimal learning environment for our kids, right? Having really, really clear, high expectations. So wanna be really, really clear that when we say we wanna have strong relationships with our kids, it doesn't mean that we're backing down on academic rigor or the expectations that we have for our kids. When we define a relationship, we talk about a high performance relationship with students, which means I care about you, but I care about your learning too. I'm gonna have high care, high press or high push for the learning piece as well. And typically, that's gonna correlate to student engagement. When we look at our behavioral spaces, we want a place where kids have a physical environment to learn and also behave well. And the focus of that is always on student teacher relationships. Some of the non-academic proactive programming pieces though, that are part of the student experience that really actually contribute to what we think are, are life success as well as some of our proactive programming in the decision-making space and the responsibility space. I've highlighted a few of the programs that we've implemented within District 200 that focus on decision-making. I'll start at the elementary level. We've partnered with Wheaton Police Department to implement our DARE program. Last year was our first year of that. We're in year two of that implementation. We surveyed all of our students that were a part of that program and staff. We had really, really positive results around students' perceptions around the program and its ability or impact on their ability to make positive decisions, especially related to risky behaviors. Focused around alcohol, tobacco use, some of those pieces, peer relationships, bullying. Second partnership also with our DARE officer and our Wheaton Police Department. Our DARE officer is also trained in, in internet safety. He's attended a seminar which was with Rich Wostoki, who we had come partner with us last year for a parent presentation. He's now doing internet safety programming at our middle schools. We piloted some of that last year. He's doing that in all of our middle schools this year. Our health curriculum also provides really good proactive programming on that decision-making piece. And then lastly, a board goal or a strategy that we've had each year is to ensure that our students know how to advocate for themselves and peers when a risk of harm is present. We do a lot of that work through our Science of Suicide program. So the first five or six slides that I took you through really focus on programming or the experience for all students, right? All students should get what I just talked about. There are some students though that need more, not all students, but some students need more supports. And so again, I'm gonna attempt to highlight some of those supports. It's certainly not an exhaustive list, but it is a, a, a good, good portion of them, right? So for students that need more than what we've just talked about, we'll start just with our partnership with the Early Childhood Collaborative and Metropolitan Family Services. We have a Head Start program where 100 at-risk students in the preschool ranks are able to be within our school, get early services, early structure to school. They attend full day and are getting that early instruction that they need so that when they come into our schools, we're limiting those risk factors and they're ready to come to school. For our students that are not a part of that camp, or a part of that Head Start program, we also have Jefferson. And for our students that haven't attended Jefferson, haven't attended Head Start, or have never had a schooling experience, we have proactive intervention programs like Camp Kinder. So kids are ready to come to school for us and we're having really good early results with that. Part of the student experience though also involves access to a wide gamut of intervention and student support services from our student support providers. For kids that are needing more access to care, we've got a partnership with Referral GPS, which gives families really immediate or priority access to outside care for mental health supports. We've got a full emotional wellness program at the middle and high school programs, a key focus on this for the student experiences, for our students that have experienced a crisis, extreme trauma, or have been, had a hospitalization. We're really focused on transitioning them back into school as effectively and efficiently as possible so that they can get back to experiencing the student experience. And the emotional wellness coordinator and the program is designed all around that. And then lastly, a part of the student experience, hopefully that we don't have to use ever, but we know that crises can happen. We've got a pretty detailed crisis response process in the district. We've got teams at every single school that have been trained in the crisis response model through, through Prepare, which is gold stamped by the National Association of School Psychologists. We actually have two internal trainers as well. And all that, you know, on the extreme end or on the crisis end prepares us to support students if needed. All that being said, we wanna keep getting better and probably our best opportunity to get better is to listen to our students. So at our high schools and our middle schools, we are meeting frequently in student, with student leadership input groups quarterly to learn and hear from them on various topics. We've already kicked that off. We started it last spring, but we've kicked that off already. This is just one example of how we listen to students. Some of the topics that we're talking on them with are outlined and our kids give us great feedback. And those, those input groups either serve to give us feedback to say, hey, where can we get better? And sometimes they affirm the good work we're doing as well. And by no means are just the student leadership groups that myself, Dr. Schuler, Mr. Biskin take part in. It's not limited to, to just that. Our schools also have vehicles for getting student input. But if you're a student within our district, part of that experience is an opportunity to share your voice. And at the district level, we've encompassed that too by sitting down with kids and talking with them through a structured format. I wanna just again summarize some of the increases that you see within the board monitor metrics that are a part of the student, student experience. Our schools worked really hard on this in the past year, so did our families when it comes to the student attendance. So I wanna take a moment to celebrate that work and say thank you to our district and our community. And before we go into questions on student experience, a big part of the student experience is also safety and Mr. Biskin plays a big part in that. So I'm gonna turn this over to him.
Thank you, Dr. Sloggi. I think without question, you can see that the learning experience for our students is vast and, and, and deep. But in order for that to occur, in order for that to be meaningful, in order for our staff to have impact on our students, they have to be in a safe setting. So these are just some of the topics that we've talked about in, in the past, but they're very important. Connectedness and prevention basically are hand, hand in hand. I look at them as efforts that are upstream in terms of trying to connect all of our students with a trusted adult. This is the focus of every single school. Every one of our building leaders, while learning is the center, they understand that creating a safe setting for our students and staff is paramount and that hinges on the connectedness factor. Strong connections increase the feeling of safety and increase the chances of students sharing information that will be helpful to our staff and to them. We have some efforts, students going from fifth to sixth grade and then students going from eighth grade to freshman year. There are specific programs and events that really work hard to try to connect them with the school and with the people who are gonna serve them every single day. Down to the see something, say something mantra, I think if you asked any student or any staff member, this strategy that we have in place, that many schools have in place, is effective. There is no question that our students are much more open to sharing what they see, what they hear, whether it's in school or out of school, in order to help themselves or in order to help other students. This occurs on a daily basis. I think I've shared something about this in the, in the past when I've, when I've had the chance to speak to you, but I, I was hired as an assistant dean a long time ago. And back then, it was very difficult to get students to open up and to share. As the principal of Wheaton North, by my ninth year, there was a steady stream of students that were willing to share about things that they have seen or that they've heard that might either put them in danger or someone else in danger. And I think there's any question that the culture of our district has drastically changed and we have outlets and pathways for students to share with the adults so we can keep everybody safe. Drills and training. We have annual drills that are mandated by, by the state. We have three fire drills each year. We have one bus evacuation drill that a portion of our students are part of. We have one, one severe weather drill and we do one lockdown drill. Physical safety. In our sharper focus meetings, I've talked to a lot of our staff about this, but all of our outside doors are locked. Anyone who wants to enter a building has to go through door one in a secure entry. They have to be vetted through the visitor management system. So that is a standard across the district. Cameras. All of our buildings are outfitted with at least outdoor cameras. We are engaged in the process of outfitting every employee with swipe cards so we know who's entering and who's leaving each building. And then the most recent addition have been night locks at the elementary school level. So those are just some of the ways that we're working to keep our students safe. And I think as, as you'll see as I, as I move on, that the student safety experience as well as the staff one is very, very similar. Any questions?
For Chris, the, glad to see the attendance picking up, the absenteeism dropping. Is, is the issue concentrated with a few students that are absent a lot or is it pretty much spread across the entire student body?
Yeah, that, that number that we're actually reporting on is all about students that are absent more than 10% of the day, or more than 10% of the year. So that number we're reporting would be students that have 18 or more absences in a year. So it's the latter. It's students that are absent a lot. Our general attendance rate is pretty steady. I think it's around 95%, 96% for all kids and that's been pretty standard.
You mentioned working with the Wheaton Police Department. Are other police departments involved with us or is it focused on Wheaton?
It's primarily been the Wheaton Police Department that is, is our main connector for that programming and they're willing to do that programming for all of our schools. So that's been a benefit and we're really thankful for their partnership.
Good. How, how's the referral GPS usage been?
Yeah, it's been significant and I don't have, I report on those numbers in the spring, so I don't have them off the top of my head, but what I can tell you is our access has been very, very strong, not only from internally our staff making referrals for, to, and giving them to parents, but actually parents accessing and families accessing our referral GPS site that's on there. I believe in the spring, working with a med who runs Referral GPS, we had the highest or one of the highest usage pieces for our parents actually accessing the referral GPS site. So we, the usage numbers have been really strong.
Good. And I've heard two different terms, extracurricular and co-curricular. And being an amateur, I'd like to know if there is a difference or if so, what it is. like to know if there is a difference, or if so, what it is.
I don't know if there is. Maybe somebody could correct me, but when I say them, I need them, I use them interchangeably. So I really mean athletics, clubs, and activities, and sports. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, just two, two quick kind of requests for metrics, data comparisons. One's easy, and this would be interesting to look at the student attendance versus our benchmark districts, how we're doing against the similar alluded districts. That's easy to pull off the report card. The other one, which I'm not sure how easy it would be, but it would be, it would be interesting to tell those students, fifth grade students go through DARE? And they, we've done that for year one.
Last year was year one.
Last year was the first year. It'd be interesting to see how those students move through middle school in comparison to prior years. I don't know how to do that, but that would be an interesting way to kind of gauge the effectiveness of that program.
Agree 100%. We've had some really discussions about that. I've started some really discussions honestly with Julie Ozmickowski, our data director, on that. Our first step was to do the student surveys because we don't have that yet, but it's on mine, so I think it's a valid point.
This is great, thank you. Three questions. When we look at school connectedness and the extracurricular participation, for those students that, if you look at the intersection of those are, I'll say, left out, they have neither the trusted adult nor participating in extracurriculars, I think based on all of our prior discussions, we would say that's a concern from an academic achievement standpoint, but probably more importantly, mental health and safety. Do we with those students do any follow-up to see if they have connectedness outside of the district, whether it's park district activities, faith groups, et cetera, so we know, if we, so that we know if we have students who are truly on an island and isolated?
Yeah. At our high school level, they've done some work where they're actually pulling those students in and, and going one by one and/or surveying them. So each summer, we meet with the high school teams to talk about their process for those students. So it could be a combination of, of either pulling those students in. Last year, they pulled all the, I believe, at least with our freshman group, we pulled all those students in, had one-on-one conferences with them, and it was a combination of, some kids were just genuinely involved in stuff outside, and that was fine. So it was kind of getting to that bottom piece, but I guess the large scale answer would be, yes, we do a combination of either individual pieces, you have a professional learning community looking at those students, some sort of strategy to connect them.
Given, you know, kind of national statistics on, you know, suicide rates at the younger age levels, middle school, as well as you look at crisis events, you know, school threats, things like that at the younger levels, is there a reason not to replicate that at our, our middle school level?
To replicate?
The kind of one-to-one outreach with those students who lack the connectedness.
Yeah. So a few things. One, right now with the relationship mapping, when we see students that are not connected, our schools do have to activate some sort of response process. So they have to look at the survey, which will be given here in the fall, and then identify students that are not connected, and either identify an adult that can go out and make an authentic connection with them, or have some sort of strategy to find an interest to connect them. So that's, just from our survey perspective, we do one in the fall, and we do one in the May. I'm reporting to the one on you, for you in the May because we do that pre-one to really do that type of work. Layered into that, we now initiated a tool where we're going to gather co-curricular data as well, so it gives us kind of another piece as well. So those efforts are ongoing and improving at the middle school level.
Thank you. Second question, with regard to physical safety, I seem to recall after our April discussion of safety, that there was some discussion of taking our camera systems and facilitating law enforcement access to those cameras. Am I remembering that correctly? And is that for all of our camera systems, or is that only for the newer camera systems?
So we do have a recently created and signed MOU with Wheaton PD. They do have access in an emergency to be able to access the cameras from their station.
And that, that's for all of our systems?
Yes.
Okay. And then, thank you. And my last, actually not a question, but just a positive shout-out. With regard to proactive programming, I think in addition to what you shared, many of our PTAs do an excellent job in that regard, and so just want to praise them for that. Thank you.
So with regard to physical safety, I appreciate the connectedness, the preventative measures put in place. I think a lot of community members, a lot of us, have different ideas about, there's so much that could be implemented, is there too much or too little? And in thinking about it, there are some things that I definitively agree with, and then there's some that I'm like, no, I really don't think that's a good idea, but that's my personal opinion. And like, I have a very strong personal opinion about what I would suggest at our middle schools and high schools. And at what point do we revisit that? Like, is there? Because I'm thinking, we all have different ideas. We have parents who have ideas that they've been sending us, which is great, but just making sure that, like, I don't ever want to be in the position of saying, maybe we should have done that. So I know the safety committee meets, but is there a way to, to have some dialogue? Maybe this isn't exactly the right place to?
Yeah, just for clarity, though, are you saying dialogue board level? You, you can do that at any meeting. So you can, any member of the board can request the topic on the next meeting to talk about an idea or question you have around that. So are you talking at this?
Two things, yes, board level. Definitely, I think with everything that we've been receiving and that's in the news lately, it's probably a good for us to have a discussion. The other thought is when we put together the Portrait of a Graduate, we had a committee of the whole meeting where we brought in community to give us feedback. It was somewhat structured, tabletop kind of thing, even something like that, just kind of knowing what expectations are, and then also knowing what's out there, what comparative districts have, and what is reasonably available to us.
So one, one question, makes you more, more a request. When we talk about the district safety committee, just expand a little bit more about what that is, right? Who's on it? The scope of it? There's a lot of people and experts that participate in that. I think bringing some light to that might be helpful when you get to that topic.
Yep. Thank you.
And I had one other question on drills. When we do drills, I'm assuming there's an audit component to that as well? How did we do on the drill? What corrective action do we have to take? Things, things, there's, the data's collected, or at least looked at to take action?
Yeah. Police and fire provide us direct feedback immediately after those drills. So there is, the leadership teams within the building meet, and they will give feedback. For an example, lockdown drill, they, they will go through the entire building, there'll be teams with a person with them, and they'll go and check, check doors. And as soon as that drill is, is done, they will then meet and talk about, all right, you had four, four doors I could, I could actually jar open, they weren't fully locked, something like that. Or everything was great, you guys are doing awesome. I mean, it, it's immediate feedback after a lockdown drill like that.
Any other questions? Yep. Two things. One, student connectedness, not student connected, student, student voice. You know, I've been very pleased with the ambassadors. Just a question, I know they're not here tonight, are they not part of committee of the whole, or could none of them just be here?
We, we have not brought them typically to-
I can't remember from last year's-
Yeah, we did not bring them last year to any of the committee of the whole meetings.
It kind of seems, kind of makes sense. I mean, maybe for selected topics.
Could be a lot, though, right?
It is a lot. So I, it, it was just a question more than anything else. Second, on student safety, kind of Angela's point, there's a lot, right? And no matter, no matter what we do, there's going to be, there's always going to be something else. And I mean, look at some of the things that we've seen happen out in the world, in the U.S., you know, that, that there's a lot of safety around, and there's still bad things happening. But, so relative to that, is there any, and, and I, I know we do a lot of pressure testing, a lot there, but relative to safety, is there anything that keeps you awake at night?
Well, I, I, look, it is, I think we saw last April when we had multiple team members present about school safety. It is a topic that is vast and has great depth. And I think there are, it's, it's very easy to get your eyes off of the important things. And, and I think that's where our district safety committee steps up. And, and they, they were instrumental in the decision about the night locks. Like, we, we could have dedicated resources to a lot of different things that we could have put in the buildings, but to have the greatest impact, they felt like that is it. That if something were to happen, if we were to lock down, that's going to secure the door. You know, so having the experts who, who are trained not only here, but they have contacts outside of our area, and they are able to meet with experts in all of these different facets, they, they are so important to our district in making the decisions about what do we believe is right and what should we do next. But to ask that, to answer your question, it's a loaded question because-
I know, and I'm not trying to put you on this-
No, and, and I'm happy to share. There was, I think about it every day, but I, I know that I, when I went to Wheaton North every day, because, you know, it's me, it's our team, it's our staff, we're in charge of those kids, I thought about it every morning, every morning I walked in. Every morning. Coming to work here, every morning. Because it's just, it is a reality, and we have to live with it. And I think that's why it's so important, while the physical safety aspect, we have to continue to fortify that in the best way possible. But we also have to continue to dedicate time, effort, and resources to getting the know-kids and connecting kids. If, if you, if, if there's any foolproof way, that, that is as close as it's going to get, because that's why kids come to school. They come to school because of the relationships that they have with, maybe it's just one adult, one adult in the building. That's why they come to school. You know, so if we can continue to work on that while we're working on these other things, you know, that I think is what we need to do. And just to kind of wrap up, you know, Sharper Focus, we're, we're meeting with every school, and my portion deals with safety. And we have hinged a lot of our work on, there are four things that the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI say, if districts and schools can focus on these four things, they are as safe as they can be. Number one, lock your doors. Two, know your kids. Three, perform your threat assessments. And four, know your procedures. Meaning if a fire alarm goes off, kids know where to go, teacher knows where to go. Those four things. And those are four things we can control every day. You know, so this, this topic is very broad. It's an emotional topic, it's an important topic, it's the most important topic for anything, for any of these other things to happen. But I, I think we're, we're in a good place. We're always in a position where we should be listening, and we are, but we also are in a position where we can utilize experts that are shoulder to shoulder with us, and we're going to continue to do that, too.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have one last question, unrelated, well, related to safety. Do we as a district have a structured, uniform response to reports of bullying?
Yes. So within the building, we have, each building has a process for that. We also have a tip line that students can fill that out, which has been done also. The student support members of every building know how to respond to that. There was a change in bullying law, so it has expanded a little bit, and our staff fully, fully knows that. That occurred last, last year. But there, there are direct ways where students can report that they're being bullied, whether they are going to go talk to someone, or they want to fill out a form.
Thank you.
All right, John?
Just one really quick comment. We're relying on the Wheaton Police Department. For 10 years, I had the opportunity to see relatively up close and personal what they can do, and we got some really good people there. So I, we should have confidence in, in their, in their help on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would agree with you. We're fortunate.
And I don't want to leave out, thank you, agree with that. I don't want to leave out the other municipal partners that we have as well. So when we talk about that safety committee, that's not just the Wheaton municipality first responders, that includes Warrenville, that includes Winfield, so important.
Wheaton is my experience, but no question the others.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the experience of our, of our staff, this obviously, this is very similar to, in students in that we have high expectations for our staff, but we do our best to try to provide as much support as we possibly can for them. With all of it hinging on the idea that the setting is safe, they're valued, which they certainly are. I, I always thought as, as a leader of a building, as a principal, my job, number one, was safety and culture, taking care of our staff so they can take care of kids, and I think that's the approach that our district has also. From a safety lens, drill-wise, it is the same as students, because they are one in hand in doing those, those drills. In terms of training, that's an expanded view of things. Each one of our employees has to go through GCN training every single year, and that ranges with a variety of topics, and all staff are required to complete those every single year. We also have ALIS training, and that is each year. And our new staff also are ALIS-trained upon entering the district at our new teacher program. We also have Prepare training. This is crisis prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery, and that is a group of staff at each building, and all of our student services staff are trained in the Prepare model also. Just like our students, we want our staff to share with us, see something, say something, which they definitely do. Students are in the hallways, our staff are in the hallways, sometimes they hear kids talking about certain things, they will go to their department chair, they'll go to their principal and share what that is so we can keep everybody safe. Physical safety, the same thing. Outside doors are locked, visitors are vetted through door, door one. District Safety Committee, some of our staff are part of this, this group, but it is local police and fire reps that attend every one of our meetings. We also have some other schools outside of our district, we have them come. We meet monthly. There are not a lot of district safety committees in the area that regularly meet on a monthly basis. We definitely do. The purpose of that committee is to lead our district, they guide the district in comprehensive safety and crisis response planning. They also promote by facilitating ongoing prevention, protection, and mitigation efforts. They also assist us by providing our district and schools with needed support. And then finally, they assess prevention, they, they assess in the prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery activities. Culture, in terms of the lens of culture, this is paramount also. Our staff want to come to work every day and be engaged with the building, engage with the students, they want to feel part of something bigger, and our district and building leaders work very, very hard to make sure that our culture is strong. There's a few ways that, that, that we do that. First off, it is a district focus, it is a building focus. It's important work, and all of our leaders know that. All other work stands on the strength of our culture, and we have embedded feedback loops so we can improve. Some of those in regard to survey data, we have five essentials data, we have morale survey data, state interview data, and most recently last year, we added new, new teacher mentor survey data, too. So these feedback loops are very important for us to understand how people feel about being, being at work, what support we can give them, and the impact that they have on our students. As I mentioned, our new teacher mentor program, this was new last year. This is a connection with another staff member that they are paired with so they can talk with them about any issues, challenges that they are having. But that mentor can also get them ready for certain things during the school year. As we know, it's an annual thing, they can help them prep for what's coming up next. This helps build morale and be belonging within the district and with their school. Our new higher induction program is also part of our culture. We try our best to introduce and acclimate our new staff members to our culture, what we stand for, and ultimately, how we work. And then there are many, many other little things that really do contribute to the culture of a building and of a district. We have building leaders that are thoughtful, mindful, and intentional about what they do. It could be something as simple as they know a staff member is going through something, they see them in the hall, they pat them on the back, or they make time for them to come into their office. It could be- into their office, it could be a staff shout out at a staff meeting, it could be all those little things, all those little things build up and they create a culture where people feel like they're part of something bigger. I'm now going to hand this over to Melissa Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Biskin. I have three more components I want to highlight regarding the staff experience. So first is professional learning, this is instrumental for continuous improvement and supporting our staff, especially in the work projects that I have been a part of. We follow a three-structure plan for professional learning that includes training, planning, and coaching. You'll see here multiple strategies that we have put in place or have, are continuing to work on right now regarding professional learning. I think most exciting, and thank you to the board for the support in expanding the coaching that we have in place, we actually now have coaching in place at every one of our levels. Early childhood, we expanded, we have a coach there now, middle school, we now have a coach for middle, for math and ELA, and we were able to expand the elementary math coaching well, as well. Obviously, with new instructional materials, there's been significant professional learning for our staff with both of those. And we also, thanks to the board, we were also able to utilize some funds for substitute teachers to collaboratively plan with math coaches. So teachers were able to step away from their classroom, have a sub cover them, and they were able to have dedicated time with their coaches. And as well, Dr. Salagi has supported the professional learning as well, specifically highlighting the tier-one behavioral training that he has put in place with elementary staff. Mr. Biskin spoke to the mentoring program, that's certainly something we're pleased to have. I do want to give a shout out to our Professional Growth Committee, that's a joint committee with WWEA, we designed that program collaboratively together, utilized feedback from staff in the design and also feedback on how it was going. And we are kind of going through a 2.0 of that this year, working with WWEA as well in terms of like, how do we best support our new teachers that are at the elementary level to learn illustrative math and bookworms? It was fine when they were new and we were all learning together, but as we onboard more staff, we are going to have to have a dedicated focus to getting them up to speed and we want to be really thoughtful about what that's going to look like. So that's in the works for this year. And then lastly, I'm just going to highlight that idea of staff input. We use lots of structures for staff input. While we are on these Sharper Focus meetings, I continue to say that our work in the Ed Services Department is excellent because we have excellent teachers that we can work with and we are getting their input on how to design the learning experience for our students. So we have lots of committees that are going on in the district right now that my team leads, and we are purposeful in having feedback loops when we're going through pilots and implementations. We are also going through a process right now of getting feedback from our staff about special education, we're going to be reporting that out to you in October. And lastly, our high school always has an input process on a yearly basis through course proposals that those then come to the board on a yearly basis.
Any questions, Board?
Just one question, do staff have access to a way to anonymously report something that they feel like they want to report but want to maintain their anonymity?
I believe we've set up structures for that kind of anonymous feedback, we've had lots of different, if you're speaking in the curricular space, that's how I'm answering my question.
I guess it was in any space?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll speak at least.
Outside of a survey with structured questions, like if there was an issue and they felt uncomfortable reporting it even to administration, even though that's where they should go? Is there something, like an anonymous tool?
They have access to the safety tip line, so really that safety tip line is open to anybody within the, the community, staff, student, parent, that does that. So again, I guess I'm, I'm envisioning perhaps what you're thinking about that they may want to report is just some type of issue that we need to be aware of. So my assumption is that has a connection point to safety that's available to anybody in the district. That's probably, I guess, my perspective, that's probably the only like true anonymous kind of based tip line that somebody could use. Melissa, were you thinking of something? Grab them, yeah.
I'm probably not the best person to speak to it, but also the morale survey.
Sure. So, so they do, there are obviously some lenses through that, those morale survey checks and some of the follow-up that goes to it, but, but I guess, again, I think your question was like, one-time reporting, there's something that they think we need to know about that's happening inside of a building, I think of the range of pieces, I think that anonymous tip line would be probably the best structure.
And, and that has been used in, in the past. I mean, you can tell by how something's written and what they're talking about that it's somebody that's working within a building.
And they know that, that's the, available to them as an outlet to.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's on our front webpage.
Thank you.
Can you go back two slides? Yeah, so I guess a question of what's not on this list, so in our WWEA contract, we have this professional, ongoing professional development that staff can take, and so I'm just, I don't feel like we talk about that very much, it's not on this list, is that something that is still a useful tool? You know, is that a point of emphasis for our staff? Is there a good?
Are you speaking about micro-credentials?
Yes, I didn't know what the term was, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
I feel like that's not, it's kind of off the radar for the board of knowing if it's useful.
Mr. Biskin, I think collects the data yearly.
Yeah, we had, we had over 900 micros taken last, last year, which was an uptick from, from the year prior. We continue to encourage our staff to be able to use that and those are courses that they can gain knowledge and really apply something quickly to the classroom.
And, and also, part of the Professional Growth Committee is, we have structures in place to look at what micro-credentials are available and we work collaboratively to continuously add courses based on feedback from our staff.
The discussion on the Professional Development Committee, first of all, I'm just excited that we have that committee, I think the more that we can invest in our professionals, our students are going to benefit because that is just going to be amplified by all of the students that are in their classroom. But that also reminded me of a question I had, I had for the District Safety Committee that I know, Mr. Biskin, you've talked about some of the professional development you've done in that space before in terms of going to conferences, so can you elaborate a little bit on some of the different professional development within the Safety Committee on that issue? And then do you have the resources you, you need, or is there any additional professional development needed in that space?
Well, I think from, from a PD standpoint within the Safety Committee itself, it, we rely a lot on our police and fire bringing, bringing topics to us, too, and then talking to us, training us on, you know, the various topics that, that they bring. Good example, that Deputy Chief Ryan Conway was able to spend some time, well, a lot of time, about 10 weeks of training with the FBI, and he was able to come back and share some of that with us, some of the views, some of the training. I think it verified a lot of the things that, that we're, we're doing work, but we always have room to continue to grow. But we really rely on the experts in those spaces to bring to us different topics. And then, of course, we can have that as like a standing agenda item. I know that the Prepare Model is something that we talk about each month now, we give an update on staff training, and then we also probably will start to break out some smaller groups that will focus on some of the structures that each of the buildings can have within that model. But yeah, we, we constantly focus on that.
Julie, one piece I'll add to that, because Matt attended last year LUDA, the Large Unit District Association, has really made safety a big focus of their winter conference each year, so that brings together the largest unit districts across the state, many of those that certainly that we compare ourselves to, but also like organizations from around the state, and they, they brought in individuals that were able to reflect on, share best practices, challenge districts to think about continued improvements and, and opportunities. So I think that, that's been a big focus. LUDA also has monthly kind of job-alike collaborative, so again, we've really talked about safety through kind of two lenses tonight, certainly the, the physical security element, we talked about it through the student connectedness element, safety more and more, and if you see almost any safety framework, it includes it now, it has a growing and expanding arm that ties to Jason's world in cybersecurity and what we're doing to protect data, protect systems in, in that space. And I would also continue to say, again, beyond like the, the physical security element, just the, the notion of surveillance, it has a couple of arms, certainly both like camera systems that give you eyes, but also technology systems that continue to give you enhanced alert capabilities, which again, Mr. Spencer spent a lot of time on. So when we, we talk about locked doors, again, Mr. Biskin has talked about exterior doors being absolutely essential to be secure, but on the inside of a building, you must have the capability of quick and agile alert systems that allow staff members from anywhere in the building to activate those so that you can ensure on a moment's notice interior doors are locked and secured through, if you have secondary locking mechanisms like night locks that give you that added layer of protection, but those are incumbent on alert systems so that you know what's happening in various parts of the building. So back in the old days, lockdowns were only called from the office by the principal, they now can be alerted from anywhere in the building through the enhanced capabilities of informa cast and phones and systems throughout the building.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Eric.
Just a few things, from a staff experience perspective, are there opportunities for teachers to observe other teachers, or do we not have the means to facilitate that?
We have not put formal structures in place for that, I would say. We do have it happening, in fact, I had a principal send me an email message last night about a new teacher observing at another school and asking for my recommendations of which teachers to pair with. So I think that is happening within our buildings, but actually, it's interesting you bring that up, because Dr. Moran and I had a conversation about this idea of expanding the professional learning for our new teachers. We actually talked about that being a part of the process where new teachers could have an opportunity in learning bookworms and illustrative math to go into different classrooms, so.
So if that's something of interest to expand upon that, are there any resources you would need from us? For instance, I assume substitutes are needed to cover those scenarios, is, are you adequately resourced to do that?
I think when we go through that budget development process, those would be conversations that my department would be having and with Dr. O'Keefe, so we would be looking at that sub-line that we currently have and if it can adequately support that.
And then admittedly, a very small sample size, but I had the privilege of, of meeting several times with my teacher work group and got some, some feedback that they felt that there was an opportunity in the handoff from grade to grade and especially school to school in terms of, you know, sharing information about, you know, the students that they've worked with and helping to prepare that next teacher who's receiving them so that they can deliver more individualized teaching. Is there anything formal done in terms of those grade-to-grade and school-to-school handoffs, or is that an area of opportunity?
We do have structures in place right now, so this is specifically often a structure that is used for students who have identified supports. So our students that have an IEP, our multilingual specialists really do collaboration, so we have those structures in place that do happen each spring between elementary, middle, and high school.
Thank you. And then last question, a little bit in the physical safety space, but also, I guess, climate and morale for teachers. You know, I can imagine that in the event that there are incidents at schools elsewhere, that teachers who already come to school, I think every day thinking about safety, just as all of us do, that there can be an emotional toll. Do we have supports in place for, for teachers who, you know, in the aftermath of those events feel like they need to talk to someone?
Probably best handled by Dr. Salagi.
I think there's two things, I would, I would start actually with what's available through human resources, which is like the employee piece.
Yeah, we have the EAP program, which we regularly share the information, that staff is able to access that at, at no cost. Within each building, there are people in place, too, that if something were to happen, and if they're not equipped, we would then send people to that building to make sure they were equipped. That's part of our, part of our model.
Yeah, I'd say that, that's what the Prepare Crisis Response Model is built on, so even if, to Mr. Biskin's point, depending upon the situation, we could actually deploy staff members from a separate building to support staff members at another building even.
And I was thinking less about situations with an incident here, but just being in the profession, I can imagine when an incident occurs elsewhere, it still takes an emotional toll on our teachers.
Hundred percent. So aside from even those formal pieces, I think, you know, when Mr. Biskin talked about the cultural piece, a lot of that rests on the, the insights and the, the art of leadership and sensing that and being there to support staff. So sometimes after maybe a national event happens, it's not uncommon for our principals to bring together their whole staff and just talk to them and say, hey, remember, we're doing this, we got this. So there's that balance, too, and I would say those things are informal, but we depend on our leaders for that.
Thank you very much.
Certainly the part of the evening that you're all were waiting for, so we'll continue down the operational excellence, side division 2026, and talk about finance and facilities. Certainly, our mantra within District 200 is operating from a conservative viewpoint and standpoint. Part of what we do is certainly producing a, and asking you to approve, a balanced budget on the operating side annually, a few outcomes of that certainly, and then, which comes from financials, and I'll talk a bit more about some of the things that we have on the dashboard, specific to finance, but on average, every year for the last decade, we've spent less than the state average, yet have, have higher outcomes for our students. Your financial recognition from the State Board of Education is at the highest level it can be at, I'll show you what that looks like in just a minute, and then we've had a consistent double A+, so the second highest level with a positive outcome, or a positive outlook, that's the plus side of things, from S and P. So some metrics on the dashboard, pretty simple, you've got a board policy that talks about balancing your operating budget, you see at the very end of one of the paragraphs in the policy there, that to the extent possible, I consider that to the extent not possible, the must side of things, that we bring a tentative budget that is balanced, that a final budget that's balanced to the board, and what you just approved two weeks ago is the 15th consecutive year that this Board of Education has approved a balanced operating budget. I can tell you from knowledge in previous districts and from districts all around the northern Illinois area, this is not commonplace in public education, and it's something I think that we need to continue to remind our public about our fiscal conservative nature whilst still bringing forth budgets that are conservative, yet meet the needs of our staff, students, and certainly our district. Another area, it's a byproduct of the budget and then your annual financial report, you've got a fund balance policy, that range within your fund balance, fund balance policy is 25 to 40%, that's of operating revenues, you can see a, this is two, four, six, seven year history, we went back to 2017, which is when Sherman Dirges began inside the district, just to give you a perspective, that range, we've been really in the middle of that range. Fiscal year '23 was slightly above 32%. We are coming close to wrapping up our audit for fiscal year '24, I would expect fiscal year '24 to be right in that same range number as a whole. Another byproduct of your annual financials are a recognition from the state, so ISB has a financial profile score, there are five major indicators which are listed in the first paragraph up top, those are all weighted, and then that becomes an outcome score in fiscal year '20 that related to a reduction in overall debt that helped to increase that specific profile score. in overall debt that helped to increase that specific profile score. The reason we've been at 3.9 for the last now four years, and I would anticipate we were going to be at 3.9 for a very long period of time, one one of the recognitions or the levels within this overall calculation and profile score requires you to have six months worth of fund balance. We are typically closer to the three or four month of fund, three to four months of fund balance. I think if we were to get to a six month fund balance, we'd be at the top end of your board policy as it relates to overall operating balances. So I'm not, I don't anticipate we're going to get to that point anytime soon. But that's that's the only difference that's missing as a whole. But we still operate and function on a annual basis within the guidelines from board policy and what's necessary to support the district. Couple of aspects on long term debt. You specifically have done a great job of getting us to this point. We've used this in many conversations and information that we're sharing with the community about our upcoming referendum. There's a few slides I'll talk on about that. As a reminder, tax levy coming up here in the next few months. We'll have the tentative levy in front of you in November, ask for final approval in December. That specific levy, so the levy for 2024, again, this levies are always calendar based, has the last year of debt payment. And the last payment that we will actually make on your behalf is scheduled for October 1st of 2025. That's all referendum debt, all bonded debt, anything that's been approved by the board and or the public in the past at that point is extinguished. You are debt free. The only obligation that you still carry from that side of things is the lease certificates related to Jefferson. And again, we pull evidence based funding out of the education fund to support the payment of those lease certificates. We're required by law to pay those lease certificates out of Fund 30, but we do not tax or extend taxes or request an extension for taxes out of that. So all of your long term bonded debt is gone. What that means and where we sit today is you are double A plus, again, what a S and P ranking, second highest ranking, considered very strong financial picture. There was also a plus or minus that can be added to that. We're a plus, meaning that there's a positive outlook from the investment community about District 200 as a whole. And if in fact, we have the pleasure of moving forward with much of what we've been discussing about, this in fact, review will happen again by external agencies. That's the finance side of things. On the facility side, certainly we've heard every aspect of what's been told tonight fits into facilities because I do think finance and facilities are part of the building blocks of support that we need to have inside of our district to allow everything else to happen. So our job is to make sure that we have creative environments that are safe, secure, consistent and efficient. They're accessible to all. They provide our students and staff with 21st century learning opportunities. What that looks like and what you developed was the 2017 Master Facility Plan. It's the baseline for all the work that we've done over the past seven years. Here's just a quick recap of things that have been specifically completed. You can see the pillars and now moving forward, major focus on the middle schools. What does that mean from a Sherman Durgus, another board policy perspective as a whole? This does not include fiscal year 25. So the work that's been done this summer, we've not finalized all of that work yet, but those investments are more than $9 million. So when you look at where we've gone from fiscal year 18 now through fiscal year 25, what's in fact, that is all finalized, the board has invested just about $56 million in facilities, a significant investment in those facilities. We have 23 facilities. We have a lot of real estate and square footage to be concerned about and to take care of on a daily basis. And and again, as you've heard and as you know, most of that focus has been on the elementary and the high school side of things, which leads us to where we're at with the referendum that's on the ballot for this November. Not a reminder for the board, you know this, but a reminder for our public or maybe new to our public. This is a community based referendum. We feel strongly about that. We began work more than a year and a half ago in terms of concepts as it relates to the middle schools. The board asked us to put a pause to that in the early fall last year and really go out and survey and speak with our community. We did that. We had more than 1,300 feedback, more than 1,300 community members provided feedback to us. That was done through two scientific phone surveys and then a number of opportunities to visit our schools through open houses. We do believe this is community's plan. We believe we've brought forth the focus of the community as a whole in it. And it really goes into three major areas. Safety and security, which is both on the hardware side of things and how we orient our buildings as a whole, straightening hallways, providing better lighting, better safety, better security, updated floors, ceilings, lights, updated environmental systems. All of that comes into the experience for a student, providing warm, safe, and welcome environments. We certainly have to make sure that we have healthy buildings at the same time. And then certainly one of the major pillars and goals is that what we're redesigning and we've brought forth to the board and now the public fits a 21st century learning model. So where are we? We know there's a referendum out November 5th. The referendum's 151 and a half million dollars. As you've heard before, we do have a tax calculator on our website specifically that will allow any resident to enter what they believe is the market value of their home to determine in the bonded interest fund what that reduction would be moving forward if in fact, the referendum was approved. The average, and it's technically a median tax decrease, so the median tax value of a home from the period of 2018 through 2022 in this district is $403,700. That would that would result in a decrease in the bonded interest fund of $71. Obviously, if the value's higher, you're going to see a little bit higher. But there's also some deductions that are in that tax calculator that factor into the overall numbers. These are all estimates. Everything depends on exactly public support and then specifically what bids look like when they do go out, if they have public support. But it's a great way for any of our public members to take a peek at what it might mean to them. And ultimately, where we're at today, all the informational assessments that we've had, all the work that Dr. Schuler is doing individually in small groups, we've got specifically a community driven collaboration. The ballot question is set for November 5th. And what we would encourage anybody that would like to see more information about what we have done and what we are proposing, go to our website. We've got outlays, videos, renderings, history of all the reports that have been given to the Board of Education that we do think is a highly comprehensive way of describing what we've done, how we've progressed through the system over the last year and a half, and what potentially our residents and our homeowners could expect.
Thank you. Any questions? Almost made it.
A quick one here, if you don't mind.
You let me off last time. I don't think that was going to happen again.
We have the double A plus bond rating. I'm curious to know what it would take to get to AAA and what the benefit of that would be. And is that tied back to the four point or 3.9 versus four?
I could today, because I've not had a single conversation with an outside investment firm yet, whether it be S and P, Fitch, Moody's, or anything about this district, just for some prior experience. If our cash on hand was a little larger, that certainly would be a factor. How significant? Couldn't exactly tell you what they would mean. As a whole, there's, there's, there's probably a few other small nuances that if in fact, we are given the opportunity to move forward, we'll learn from S and P, Fitch or Moody's, whoever it is that we look at, the value to you is the higher rated your bonds are, the less your overall interest rate should be because the appetite for that investment will be greater. The further you move up that chain, the greater the appetite for those that are investing, that want to invest in these bonds are, and they're willing to look at it from a premium perspective and receive lower volume because we're high grade quality.
It may be worth at least a preliminary discussion as to what we would have to do to get a AAA and what that what that would cost us and what the benefit in terms of a lower rate would be.
I've had that conversation with Bob Lewis at PMA. He knows it's something that we should be interested in discussing. And certainly part of his guidance to us will be as if given the opportunity again to talk about this and look forward. He will, he will, in essence, prep S and P or whoever it is to get what that sense is so that if there's information we can share with them, in essence, by putting together our portfolio, then it's available.
You have two questions. For fund balance, is there a legal maximum? I know our policy's 40%.
No, no, there's no legal state of Illinois statute maximum. We have, there are certainly districts that have a pretty significant percentage of their overall revenue sitting in fund balance.
Okay. And then my second question on this 2017 Master Facility Plan, is everything on that, was everything on that included in that referendum?
It was. So can you step back to that slide? There it is. Yes, these were the major project buckets that were actually a part of the the referendum plan. So one, obviously, we included this information just to make sure that the the board understands both from, I think, a management of long term debt and the plan itself. This has been a plan that's actually crossed over several boards, but has been, I think, a consistent focus. So again, we always describe it now as we're out talking to staff or community groups in like four major buckets, early childhood, Dunn, Jefferson, Open, New Building in 2020, two capital projects, Sherman Durgus commitment again in 2017, as we were talking to the community. We had passed the policy and obviously asking the community to trust us that we were going to implement. You now have a seven year history of not only meeting that policy commitment, but actually exceeding it right over that window of time. Three secure entries, we did that right away, utilized a little bit of available fund balance to create the secure vestibules that Mr. Biskin talked about. We've actually ticked off a couple of the library learning centers. So it says, you know, certainly on the the middle school level, not started, but incorporated in the plan. We did address two of our elementary library learning centers by drawing on some developer donations. And I think, again, helpful just in us actually having some experience in that space, understanding what worked and didn't work to build into the middle school plans. And then obviously, we did take care of a couple of the the high school elements and auditorium, tennis courts, some other paving pieces that that fit into there. We haven't addressed the library learning centers at the high school level, but really out of all of this plan, that's really about the only piece that that hasn't been addressed are the library learning centers across all buildings. That was part of that original referendum plan. But obviously, we would be taking a step closer with the three middle schools.
Relative to that, to the library learning centers, is the perspective or what we're doing now different than it would have been in 2017?
I think we've continued to learn a little bit more. I mean, I think one of the things that we've learned out of the library learning center is that even though I think we we started with a concept of maybe building a playbook, kind of like you did with playgrounds, right? They weren't actually a part of this plan even at the time, but but have come into it, that how you approach the library learning centers really is kind of individualized by the the building itself, not only from a physical layout perspective, but the needs inside of the building that that drives. So Whittier, Johnson, two very different layouts, but both driven by what the buildings determine the use of that space needed to be to optimally support student learning, right? That's the the reason you you just see some different elements. So I think that's what we've learned is you can't have just a singular playbook that will likely apply across all buildings. But but certainly, I think we've learned a lot in that that design that's that's helping us at the at the middle school level.
And that would, that's a very good point, Dr. Truly. Thank you. That would fit really where we're at with the playground playbooks. You know, we don't have three or four models that we just bring out and say, choose A, B, C, or D. It is tailored to the school and the needs of the school. And I would think if we were to develop a playbook as like a foundation for the LLCs, we'd still have that flexibility to make sure that it meets the needs of the school instead of some prepackaged plan.
And I think it would be interesting, I think some of the work's probably already done in terms of what future spending on some of these projects out of Sherman Durgus. Like, I don't know what percentage of the roofing in that first item has been completed. And then the library learning, just, you know, roughly what those dollars are and how the timeframe where we might be addressing them. And that's not a, you know, I think that's something more for after we get through November. But I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, we've we've got a projection on what the next three years could look like. And a lot of that would fit into that first category. There are still pretty significant needs out there in terms of just taking care of our facilities. But but I think, and Dr. Schuler has mentioned this before, I think we're in a very good place where we are, you, we are in more control of what's happening inside of our facilities than we may have been, say, 10 years ago. But the the path forward still, we have to invest to ensure that we are taking care of the assets that we have.
I would say one comment on the LLCs. It's a unique space within a school. And in addition to modernizing the space, it also comes with it a new understanding of the staff and the teachers about how it's used. I remember a conversation with Mr. Edwards about him working hard to make sure that the entire staff at Johnson understand how we're going to use that renovated library and make sure the librarian is is thinking and using it differently. It's a little bit different than working through a science lab. You've got a core group of teachers. LLC impacts everybody. So it's not just renovating the space, but it also has to come with it a kind of a modernized understanding of what it's supposed to do.
Kind of those two thoughts, stay back to your question. That is something that the, so back to the kind of the top piece, the capital projects, one of the things that the facilities committee has done very intentionally this year is made a commitment to always look ahead three years in that space. So you understand what's on the horizon, what's coming up to us. I think through finance committee this year, obviously, you know that from that piece, I think Eric added in a request to make sure that just from like a capital equipment perspective, we also understand what other big chunks might be coming at us in the next couple of years so that, you know, you can, you can tie those pieces together. Obviously, you handle a couple of expenditures in fitness equipment, cars for drivers ed and pieces that we just want to make sure kind of on your horizon so you always have that three year look ahead. And I think part of that is kind of understanding like which buckets those projects are going to fall in so you can project forward.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. I have two things. One, I just want to echo what John said about being in the AAA. I like the idea of being in the highest level. I can't can't see where it may not make financial sense for us to pursue that. But if it does, I like being at that top. So thank you.
Agreed.
Second thing, and I hesitate a little, so I promised my very lovely neighbor that I would ask this question. And asking it, however, I am also very frugal. So just appreciate that. With facilities, where does it fall? Or how do we manage landscaping costs at each of the schools?
Well, we technically don't have a separate landscaping budget. So we have a few folks on the O and M team that are dedicated to grounds throughout the spring, summer, and then early fall. In fact, that team was here today doing some stuff and this building next door. We've got a couple of different relationships throughout the community. So purely if you're talking about gardening, butterfly gardens or specific things, traditionally, that's been more of an individualized focus that a building with a PTA, PTO, some group proposing it, funding it, and then taking care of it over a long term. Our general responsibility is making sure that our sites are clean, neat, organized, grass is cut, sidewalks are shoveled, that type of stuff. We don't have a traditional, like we talk about a playground playbook, we don't have a playbook as it relates to landscaping. So it's more of a maintenance thing from our perspective.
And that's what I would have expected. I would expect that we have some grounds crew who comes and kind of takes care of things. I think there's maybe some grumbling that some PTAs spend a lot of money on that and they feel they have to rather than wanting to. So I don't know if that is maybe just a misunderstanding.
I will, I will say, I will say this, though. Anytime a building or a group has asked us for assistance, we've brought it to the forefront. So maybe some simple things like some cleanup at Monroe and they wanted mulch. Well, while the building focused on the cleanup, we made sure we got all the mulch that was necessary to fill all their beds out front. And that was an expense taken care of out of the operations department.
Okay. So maybe sometimes.
We do partner.
They need to ask.
Yep, yep. We partner. When we're asked, we are happy to help. Part partly of what we have to be careful of is just not doing things at buildings without some partner at the building because it's also a space that we're in for a short period of time and we need the building to own it. to own it, or if we know that we're going to be responsible, we have to plan for it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, one final piece.
Good evening. I have the pleasure tonight to talk to you about community engagement and communications within the district. And I'm going to start with community engagement. And I know when we talk about community engagement, that can involve a lot of different things. So I want to begin by just centering us around what is our goal with community engagement? So as a district, we want to create meaningful connections with parents, students, staff, municipalities, and community partners to enrich the educational experience for every student and strengthen our community as a whole. And we strongly believe that it's important to engage with our community, to support our community, and give back to our community, so that we can create opportunities for our students, which then lead to student success. So this is a list of some, but certainly not all, of the different groups that we engage with on a regular basis, as well as different businesses and organizations that we partner with, and different groups that we work together with to give back to our community. Again, this is just an idea of what it is. It is much more extensive than this. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just want to reiterate that these partnerships are incredibly important to us, because if we all work together to engage and learn what initiatives that it's important to our community and how we can partner to make those happen, we can give back to our community and support our community while enriching the educational experience for our students. When we talk about communications, I think that goes very much hand-in-hand with community engagement. One cannot happen without the other. And so I want to, again, center us around what is our goal with communications. And we want to provide clear, timely, and transparent communication for all stakeholders to be engaged and connected to what our district is doing. We want to make sure that they understand what's going on in our schools, in our district, and we want to provide a window into our schools. So we have a few different tools that we utilize for our communication efforts. And again, I'm not going to highlight all of these, but I want to start with one celebration. We have a weekly cadence where we communicate with our community, and this includes not just our staff and our students and our parents, but also community members that may not have students within our district. And you can see, I went back and took a look at what our open rates are for our board highlights in our new district newsletter. And you can see, we have a very high open rate. And you may be wondering, why did I pick March 2024? That is because the newsletter did launch in March of 2024, so I want to just make that consistent with board highlights, just to use that metric and really celebrate clearly the community values, hearing from us, partnering with us, and learning about what we are doing. Additionally, all of our schools certainly have newsletters that they use to engage and keep their specific community informed. And of course, we have the website, and we use email, text, and call alerts when we need to let our community as a wider, parents know about anything happening immediately within our schools. And we have two-way communication tools for staff to parent communication or staff to student communication, which is really essential. And we, of course, use social media to talk about what is happening within our schools and let the community know about any important news and updates on social media. Any questions?
I'm sorry, Eric. Go ahead. First, just wanted to say I appreciate, and I think the community appreciates, the omni-channel approach to communications, and especially trying to find channels that maybe reach those people who don't have students in district. The recent Winfield Word newsletter, I think, is a great example of that, where we potentially reach some people who otherwise aren't hearing what's going on in the district. And then the second thing, again, just from a praise standpoint, is work to clarify for parents avenues for communicating with the district when they need to have a discussion. On the website, the kind of issuer topical, prescriptive, who to go to, what the escalation paths are, I think is great work, and I hope we keep that refreshed and evergreen adding to it as new topics emerge. So thank you.
Yeah, just to reiterate that, for any community members that may not be aware, on our website and all of our school websites, under, I believe it's the parent section, we do have something that is called who to contact, and there are very, it just kind of guides you on if you have a question or a comment related to maybe co-curricular things, it's going to tell you who to go to first, and then what your second or third contact may be. So it's a really great resource for our community.
Can you share a little bit about your connection to the communication professionals and the other partners we have? Like, how do you connect with those folks, right?
Yeah, I would love to. So I'm going to go back one slide here. So I am on the safety committee as well, so I do sit on that and work with our first responders. But I do meet on at least a monthly basis with our local PIOs. So that is not just Wheaton, that is Warrenville and our other municipalities. And then I do also work with people who are in my, like, role at the Park District and the library. We meet on a very regular basis.
Thank you.
Can I just mention one thing tied to that, because I think important update for the board to know and understand, especially in crisis situation, I don't know that you will likely ever meet what is likely the expectation for how quickly you can communicate information out. It's a challenge, right? I recognize, especially obviously around safety situations, parents want to be alerted as soon as it's practical. One of the things that we have done this year, so often the challenge is if there's any point of connection to our first responders, before we can put anything out, it needs to work through their communication channels as well. They need to make sure that we're not communicating anything out that's going to potentially impede with an ongoing investigation and create that. But understanding that desire to work quickly, one of the things that this has been working on is trying to look at where we can kind of pre-draft some elements of communication that have already likely met kind of their lens through what they're looking at as well as ours, just to hopefully shorten that timeline of when some things happen to when everybody is comfortable saying, this is the information. We are clearly comfortable to communicate out and do that. So that whole first responder PIO group, I think, continues to be important, just in making sure that we're checking boxes across municipality pieces as well.
What's PIO?
Public Information Officer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you go to the last slide? Just a question on the big lightning rod, social media?
Yes.
Can you talk about how it's, you know, how effective that is, which platforms are most useful, you know, any kind of warning signs, maybe?
Yeah, absolutely. So social media changes every single day. It will never be consistent. So we always have to make sure we're staying on top of what is currently being used. And I think we also talk about the needs or the, where it's most beneficial is different at each level. So we typically find that at your elementary level, you're going to get most of your engagement and reach most of your parents at the Facebook and Instagram level. Kind of see the same thing around middle school. High school is probably going to be more of that Facebook level, whereas the students for high school are more on Instagram or TikTok. I would say at this point, X, or formerly known as Twitter, is kind of becoming more for athletics or just business-to-business. It is not being used as much for school districts. Actually, a lot of my colleagues in other districts are seeing their districts kind of step away from X, just because, again, it's changing every single day. So we just want to stay current with the times. And I would say, to your point about, you know, what are we seeing trending-wise? You know, I think students are using social media different all of the time, and we're doing our best to educate them on what, how to use it properly and in a good way. And the same thing with our community. We have those conversations frequently. I know we talk about it at CAC, and we, you know, really want to make sure that it's being used in the correct way.
Just a quick comment. Tonight, we've had so much really good content from all of the different areas within SLT. And I appreciate that we've kind of organized this meeting a little differently with questions at intervals, so that we can make it available to the public. But as we're nearing two hours, it is also kind of a big request to ask someone who has a question to listen through that much content. Are we still doing those one-pagers on content areas? I know there was one for facilities and finance to kind of break up this information into more digestible format.
Yes, absolutely. And that gets updated every time we have, you know, different reports come in. So like in October, we will update all the things within Melissa's department. And so we look at that as those come in and how we can update that.
All right, great. Well, thank you. Dr. Schuler, do you want to?
I don't have anything else. Again, kind of took us through the five major buckets. Certainly, I think the only thing that I kind of previewed the meeting with and would end with, you know, kind of on a quick basis, just requests for topics that perhaps you want to dive a little deeper into in future committee, the whole, and/or regular board meetings.
Board, any other topics?
So I have a question. It's not really a topic for future board meetings, but since this is called State of the Schools, we have a meeting Friday morning with our local government partners. Is this going to be the basis or parts of this for that?
Some parts of it. So actually, I think what we're doing Friday morning is a version of what we've been doing at each of our schools through our sharper focus sessions. So it has kind of a quick hit slide on each of these major topical areas and then a little deeper dive into the referendum. We will spend a little more time on the referendum question with the group on Friday.
Just a comment. One of the things I appreciate about tonight's presentations was a focus on the why, not just the what, right? And that gets really important as we understand the interconnectedness of all five topics. And even the topic on our bond rating and, you know, fund balance, right? The why. Why is that important? What are the pros and cons, and puts and takes? And I think that came through in all the conversations. So I really appreciate that perspective.
Yeah, I just had a new thought, too, and it was on one of the earlier screens, but a few of us attended the Student Excellence Foundation meeting there tonight. It's pretty remarkable how successful, like, my perception of that group is becoming, and I'd like to celebrate and recognize them, whether they come to a board meeting. You know, that might be a great topic within the CAC as well. It's pretty remarkable, kind of the growth of that over the last, I guess, decade.
Yeah.
Let's recognize those people that volunteer their time also.
That's a great point. Thanks. All right. I think we're all around looking at each other, so I think that means I read the last part of this. We have no public comment tonight. So there being no further action to come before the board, you know, in session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Moved by Mr. Paulson, second by Mr. Long. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The meeting's adjourned.